And welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished business or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium identifying themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. If you do wish to speak, I ask that you do sign in. There's a sign-up sheet right at the entrance there and I will collect that in just a few moments. Our first order of business this evening is going to be an executive session. Councillors, can I get a motion to consult with legal counsel with one MRS 4056E?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of going into executive session? Seven oh. Great. We'll be back momentarily.
And welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished business or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium identifying themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. If you do wish to speak, I ask that you do sign in. There's a sign-up sheet right at the entrance there and I will collect that in just a few moments. Our first order of business this evening is going to be an executive session. Councillors, can I get a motion to consult with legal counsel with one MRS 4056E?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of going into executive session? Seven oh. Great. We'll be back momentarily.
Okay, Councilors, can I get a motion to come back from executive session, please?
No move.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Want him to come back from executive session?
Nope.
Flip paper for that?
Thank you. All right, excellent, wonderful. Okay, moving on with our agenda this evening, we start with a proclamation. Please bear with me, I've been sick, the voice may not cut out, but I'm going to give it the old college try. Whereas, open and free elections are at the heart of the American democratic system, and where for our democracy to be successful, elections must be managed and staffed in a manner that promotes participation through efficient voter registration, convenient voting opportunities, a well-designed and operated system that ensures a safe and efficient voting experience. And whereas the successful operation of this most important civic function would not have been possible without the hard work and commitment of the staff of the City Clerk's Office, along with all other city employees who helped with the various election duties and tasks. Whereas the assistance from the staff and administration assessing parks and recreation and public works made the notifications, preparation, equipment setup, and delivery and teardown of the voting location, and allowed for a streamlined process. And whereas the fire department, police department, emergency dispatch, Thomas College Security gave voters and staff a secure voting experience. And whereas Thomas College provided the use of the Harold Alphon Athletic Center as the city's polling location, and Colby College provided the use of a fully-staffed shuttlebus at no charge to the city, which provided voters a free bus ride to the polling location for the entire voting day. And whereas several high school and college students volunteered to participate and assisted with the administration of the election process. Whereas many election workers came forward to offer their services to assist, not only on Election Day, but also in the months leading up to the election. Now therefore, I, Michael Morris, the mayor of Waterville, the city of Waterville, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Waterville, do hereby recognize and thank the city staff and the election workers who devoted their time and abilities to ensure that the November 5th, 2024 election allowed the citizens of Waterville to conveniently exercise their right to vote in a safe and efficient manner. So I know that I have signed over 100 of these, which we are then mailing out to all of the workers, so they'll get one with the actual seal on it, and not a photocopy that I have here, but they'll get an official one in the mail, which is awesome, so excellent. And thank you to everybody that participated in that. Okay, let's start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, any disclosure of conflict of interest? Any councilors have a conflict of interest with any of the votes that they'll take this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move right into a presentation from the Finance Director, Christina Theron. Christina, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. This presentation should have been made at the last meeting, unfortunately, something came up, I was unable to make it, so I do apologize. Thank you for your patience in me getting this to you. I included a memo saying that financial reports for the first quarter account positions are pretty much on target. The only one that was a little bit off was the ambulance revenues, and that seems to be yearly. And whether that is due to more seasonal viruses or colds or things during the winter months, unfortunately, for the people who get sick, it seems to pick up as the weather changes a little bit. So it's nothing significant that we should worry about, it's just, I wanted to point that out, that it appears a little bit off during the first quarter, when you review the report. So if anybody had any concerns, I wanted... I don't want to take your time, I see that you have a lot of stuff to address, but if you have any questions on any of the accounts or the reports, or if there's anything else you'd like to see differently, we put it on.
Councilor Gagnon?
I had a couple of specific questions. When we finalized the budget, we made conditional cuts, not cuts, we adjusted numbers in reference to those lines, recall those. How are those, are those still okay?
There are some that are under, but there are, like the excise tax, that is very subjective to the time of year. In the spring, when people get their tax returns and the weather's good, there seems to be a lot more that register new cars. And so, some of those, we won't know till we get much closer into it, how we fare for the year. But there was nothing, some of them were off some, but it can be because it was only the first quarter. So it will be something we continue to watch, and if I notice anything that looked way off from what was projected, I will note it. Okay.
Yes, one more. Yeah?
The revenue, let me understand this, the revenue for the solar park farm at the airport, that revenue, is that online, is that over, where is that? The solar park?
The solar park revenue? Are you referring to the reserve solar fund, or are you referring to rental from the people who have solar farms out there that pay monthly?
No, I'm talking about the...
I believe you're talking about the match fund at the airport, the solar fund on the airport, on the reserve account, yeah.
Okay, you're talking about the solar reserve. There are different ones, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, that's good.
Yes, they have paid what they're obligated to pay for the two payments of the $250,000. Most of that money has been assigned as matching funds or to accomplish projects up there.
So that contract requires them to say pay a specific amount? No?
They had two pieces to that contract. It was agreed that when they started the project, they would pay $250,000, and then when the project came online, they would pay an additional $250,000, and then they pay a monthly rental fee ongoing. So there were two cash payments that went into the reserve account that were matched for the airport. The monthly fees go under the airport revenues that offset his annual operating costs.
If that is on target?
They have paid, they have paid everything up as they're required to do.
And that revenue stays at the airport?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Christina? Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Again, always my favorite report, I love it, so keep it up.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
All right, moving on to the City Manager's Report.
And that's not your favorite report, right?
This, if we're going to rank, if you are forcing me to rank them, no, it is my second favorite report.
It's all right, just wanted to clarify.
So there, I'm going on the record, thank you.
Off with the second favorite report. Some downtown programming notes, we will have a visit on December 5th from the main downtown center. This is part of a final step in the process to become a downtown affiliate member. Meeting will involve a presentation by the city, as well as a walking tour of downtowns. We look forward to having them here on December 5th. City staff are also taking a serious look at adding some additional downtown events, as in programming for 2025, including potentially resurrecting the Taste of Waterville, and Joe and Michael are also working on some other possible events, in addition to building upon our Halloween event success. So more details to come there, but potentially some exciting things happening. Our hopeful sign, which is going to go atop the Lockwood Mill, fundraising for that project is ongoing. Chimbro has confirmed they will support the installation and the electrical work, and that will be happening at some point in the very near future, and we're looking at as far as a full installation timeline of spring 2025, but it could change, obviously, with a number of variables with the construction on the mill building. A group of us are beginning a project for some historical marker signs, to better recognize Waterville's sites of interest, as well to tell the story of our people and their history and building, the city's what it is today. So we have a good group together, includes representatives, obviously, city staff, reps from the Waterville Public Library, Waterville Creeds, the Waterville Historical Society and Cultural Center, and the Bill and Joan Alphon Foundation. So there's sort of an example of what they could potentially look like in my report, but, so that's kind of just kicking off, more to come on that, but a good way to, I think, really highlight some of the assets we have here in town. And that's not just downtown, that will be across, across the city. My next City Manager's Open Office Hour session will be November 25th, 3 to 5, we're going to do it right here in the City Hall Annex, and of course, all Waterville residents and local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend, share their thoughts, views, concerns, or anything else you'd like to share with me. An update on some events, Waterville Historical Society and Cultural Center will have their annual holiday party on December 7th from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Reddington House. The Festival of Trees at the Waterville Elks will be on November 21st, 3 to 7. I also just wanted to note, I was pleased to join both the mayor and Council de Brito this past week for the sixth annual day of welcome at the Albert Hall School on, it was 11:15. So along with the school's civil rights team, we welcomed students that morning, and had a brief opportunity to introduce ourselves and talk about our role at the city, so that was a great, a great morning there. The Waterville Public Schools will be having a strategic planning community forum, there's flyers going around, on November 25th, 5 to 6:30 at the Waterville Junior High School on West River Road. This is all part of their strategic plan that they're launching, so if you can attend that, that should be a great event. And the last thing I want to mention here is the county, Kennebec County, is going to be holding their County Budget Committee Caucus here in this room on December 11th. And we are looking for one more elected official who wants to serve on the County Budget Committee. So as you know, we had some major increases from the county this past year, not a lot of great representation, I feel, from the county. So if one of the elected officials here is interested in serving, please let me know, and we'll forward your name on to be nominated at this County Budget Caucus. There's, there's another seat, and that is an appointed official, so that would be a city staff person, and I'll just let you know, I'm going to be nominating Joe Grochmal to serve on the County Budget Committee in that role. So we are looking for an elected official, so if you're interested in serving on the County Budget Committee, please let me know, and that's December 11th, that, that meeting. Taconic Bridge, as you know, will be closing on January 6th, next year, early 2025, and will run approximately through the end of June, so drivers should be prepared for that closure for about six months. I want to remind everyone again, we are putting out a call for volunteers to assist in staffing the city warming shelter in the event of emergencies and widespread power outages over the winter. If you're interested in being trained as a volunteer, please contact the fire department, particularly Teresa Crawford at the fire department, but anyone FD can help you out, or even city administration... or even city administration will pass you on to the right place. So we do rely heavily on our volunteers, so if you're interested in helping out, please let us know. Lastly, a reminder to please enroll in our mass notification system, waterville-me.myfreeawards.com. I am going to toss it over to Joe now for a minute, he's going to talk a little bit about some city marketing and media strategy we've been, we've been talking about, so, Joe.
Wonderful, well, thank you, Brian, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Well, first things first, jumping over from municipal finance, one subject that I love over into marketing, this is like a dream come true for me. So diving right in, over the past few weeks, we've been taking a closer look at how Waterville markets itself, and basically how we go about sharing stories, right, putting social media out there, and what we're ultimately trying to get out of that. Naturally, we aren't just posting or putting information out for the sake of it, we're trying to get a reaction and then an action from that. And so we've been exploring two tools that we think are going to make, sort of make our outreach efforts more impactful. The first one, I'll start with a social media management tool that we're looking at right now, it's called HootSuite. Basically, what this would allow for us to do is it would allow for us to schedule social media content well in advance, and use their advanced analytics system to track when people are taking a look at it, what our most active periods are, so then in turn we can tailor social media content and send it out for when people are actually going to see it. This means that we're going to get the best bang for our buck in terms of staff time and in terms of money or grant funds if we put that into marketing, which is a major plus for us. The second product that we were looking at is a pitching and media impact software called Prowley. Prowley is a fascinating piece of gear. Basically, what it allows us to do is go out and identify journalists or members of the media based on what they write about, how they write about it, the kind of sentiment they have, their location, where their readership is located, and then in turn, we're able to target our pitches more effectively for these leaders. The other fascinating piece of this as well is that, let's say we put out an article about an event or something like that, and we publish it. Aspect of this that was a little bit, I guess, a peek behind the curtain here, we came to these two particular solutions after an extensive search, we looked at about a dozen different options, and we ended up getting at least 50% off on each of them over the course of a year, which was pretty cool. So I'd be happy to share more information on this. Again, sort of the, the upshot of all of it is it's a great opportunity for us to better target our outreach efforts, get some serious value for it, and have analytics to back up and, you know, refine our approach and strategy over time. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
This could very well quickly become number two, I'm just saying.
For reports?
This update, I'm just saying.
That would be three, that would be...
Like, you would now be bumped to three. Like, this could, this is, this is great stuff. Joe, thank you very much, I really, I think this is fantastic, and I think this is definitely something that we need as a city to get some, you know, some messaging out there, but to be able to see it and what the impact is, is huge also. So thank you very much. Councilor Finch?
How long would these data contracts be for?
So to get the full deal, it would be for one year, but we're definitely going to get value out of that. And then on top of that, we also have a free trial one month period as well on top of it, so we had a 13th month.
Okay, okay.
On top of that, but for one year, jokes aside.
I just want to add, this is easily absorbed within current budget, these are not huge costs, so we're talking about, between both of them, I think a couple or a few thousand dollars for the year, is that right?
$3,000 for both packages.
And we have a marketing budget to work with them.
Perfect, perfect. Any other councilors? Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, moving on to councillor comments and/or committee reports. Any councillor comments, any committee reports this evening?
If nobody has anything, could we have Patty introduce her new staffer?
Sure.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, I would like to introduce Denise Bustamante, thank you, I'm very terrible with names, I apologize. Dee, she likes to be called, is our new deputy city clerk, customer service manager in our office. She came in a week before the election, and she's still here. So we're really thrilled about that, she's doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Wonderful, welcome. Okay, moving on to public comments. Again, this is the time which citizens have the ability to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda, and they will have up to three minutes, I have the track. First up, Amy.
So my name's Amy, and I'm the coordinator at the Southend Teen Center. I'm here tonight to share an opportunity for our community to come together and support some of our most vulnerable teens. This year, many of our families reached out to us due to hardships for assistance for the holidays. Unfortunately, some of them missed the deadlines for certain programs, or the teens were just too old for those programs. So to address this, we launched our Giving Tree Project to ensure that our teens feel the holiday joy that they deserve. So what, this is how it works, so our teens selected three gifts, under $50 apiece. These requests have been added to a, to a, hold on, signup genius link that's on the Southend Teen Center's Facebook page, and you can choose a gift that you want to purchase. You can have it drop shipped to the teen center, or you can bring it in when I'm there. Someone is always there between 2 and 5. We ask that you not wrap it. What we're going to do is have volunteers wrap those presents, and we're going to give them to the families so that they can give them to the children during whatever holiday celebration they have. So Waterville's always been a community that comes together to help those in need, and this is a wonderful opportunity to help us kind of grow and continue that tradition. So, yeah, just reaching out to the community for help on that. Thanks.
And that website again?
It's, it's on our Facebook page, it's Southend Teen Center, but it is a signup genius So you just go on the list, pick a kid, check the box, buy the present, ship it to us, or drop it off, and we'll do the rest. So thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, any, Patty, anyone online?
Okay.
Wonderful, all right, moving on to consent agenda. We, I need to make a, we need to have a motion to add some minutes that were omitted, those that were, that was sent out earlier this afternoon, so if I could get a motion?
I'll move, I'll move to add those minutes.
Although, any discussion with the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
Consent agenda as amended?
And now consent, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, none? Okay, wonderful, thank you very much. All right, now, at this point, can I entertain a motion to read by title only, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, great, all those in favor of reading by title only? Not, wonderful, all right, moving on to Old Business Order 205-2024.
Authorization.
Sorry, authorization to accept property donations.
Okay.
Moved to adopt.
Okay, second.
Thank you. Okay, and I believe this one, Brian, we spoke about this, and this was one we're going to postpone to the second meeting in December?
Correct.
Okay, great. Can I get a motion to postpone until the second meeting of December, which I believe is the 17th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, opposed, none? All right, moving on to Order...
No.
Okay, thank you. Well, moving on to Order 215-2024.
Designation of King Street Apartments Affordable Housing Development and Tax Increment Financing District.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Okay, this is a second reading for that, I believe that there is a, an amendment that is required.
Correct.
Patty?
So there's an amended version in your packet, and it's basically changing the date in item section 2C from April 1st, 2023 to April 1st, 2024. So does someone want to make a, a motion to accept that amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor of that amendment? Okay, wonderful.
Can we now move it as amended?
We can move it as amended, this is a second reading, so we need a roll call vote for this.
Yep, let's move it as amended, I need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we got it.
All those in favor?
We all set now?
Yes.
Roll call.
Is there any discussion, anybody do want to discuss anything with regard to this? Wonderful. You?
No, I'm voting, right?
No, we have the roll call.
Oh, gosh.
All set?
Yeah.
Councilor Gilli?
Yes.
Councilor de Brito?
Yes.
Councilor Kleepack?
Yep.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councilor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 216-2024.
amend the zoning ordinance, decrease residential B dimensional requirements.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Okay, and second reading for this one, any, any comments, additional comments that anyone, councilors need to make at this point? Okay, with that, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Gilli?
Yes.
Councilor de Brito?
Yes.
Councilor Kleepack?
Yes.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councilor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, thank you. Moving on to New Business, Resolution 219-2024.
canvassing of votes and determination of the result of the general and municipal election held on November 5, 2024.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 220-2024.
authorize the issuance of a victual's license to Pilot Enterprises Incorporated Doing Business as Hometown Cafe.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Anyone from Pilot Enterprises here this evening?
Doesn't look like it.
All right, I always want to give them a, a free plug here, I believe this is going into where the old Sweet Frog location was on the Amory Road.
Correct, yep.
So, yeah, would be interesting to see, yeah, see what, what, what this is, and no free plug, so I guess we're all going to have to stop in and check out for ourselves. Fair enough.
Now?
We, I don't know, yeah, in a few minutes, we'll let you go. All right, wonderful, all those in favor? Okay, wonderful. Moving on to Resolution 221-2024.
approve bid award to Empire Collections Agency.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Okay, now, I also believe there's an amendment that is required in this one as well, I believe we fell victim, Chief, you can come up? Didn't, didn't recognize you, like, in all these civilian clothes.
I know, Jason Frost and the Fire Department.
Allegedly, you are, I don't know.
I am on vacation and up to hunting camp, so I came back to see you folks tonight.
You look good for coming back from hunting camp.
Yeah, I took a shower.
Very appreciative of you back.
Good thing, I shaved a little bit, but, yeah. So, yeah, we do need to, on the resolution, it needs to say, be it further resolved that the council find the purchase qualifies under Article 5A of the purchasing policy. This price was obtained through a competitive bid processed through legal advertisements. I copied and pasted one too many things, and nobody caught it. That's supposed to be his job. Just kidding. It's totally my fault.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so can we get a, a motion to, for the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
And now move it as amended?
Move it as amended?
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Okay, and any discussion or questions for the chief with regard to this particular item? Councilor Gagnon?
Yes, I typically will ask if this is on budget, and so the public will know because it's not clear here, what are we buying?
So this is, and we'll have Everett come up if we have any extra questions, so we contracted quick med claims, and they do our billing for our EMS agency, but when they, after 160 days, 180 days, when they do not receive payment, then it is turned back over to us, and at that point in time, it sits on our books as uncollected debt. At some point in time, we have to do something with our uncollected debt, or Christina gets mad at us. So to do something with that uncollected debt, what we're asking to do is to go, we went to bid to come up with an agency that will help us collect that debt, or, or if you so choose, write it off, but that is entirely up to you folks, what you want to do with it. We can't hang on to it forever, because it just can't sit there, so we have to do something with the debt. If you want to know more about the debt, DC Flannery can talk about that, I believe we're somewhere around $500,000 worth of debt right now over the, since we've been running an ambulance program. Some cities choose to just write the whole thing off and not worry about it, because it does, it is a hassle and it is hard to collect on it, and some, some fire departments or agencies choose to try to go after it. We do not have the bandwidth to try to go after this ourselves, it is a long, tedious process, so we looked at going with an agency to do that for us, and the nice thing about Empire Collections is they do interface with our current billing agency, so they were able to talk with them and get all the information from them.
And so I just wanted to add a question, so basically just how it works, obviously, you know, what they recover, they get 30% of, it's just a commission, so there's no actual cost to us that we're paying out for this service, they're collecting a cut on that. The other piece I just wanted to add is, you know, I believe we've had discussions on Waterville residents are not going to be impacted by these collections, so we're collecting on all the out-of-town accounts of people, but if you're a Waterville resident, we're not going to be engaging in collection activities on you.
Correct. Yeah, we have no policies built on that right now, what we needed to do was find an agency to work with, and then we'll build our policies with that agency, so we needed to put this horse before the car, I guess you could say, the backwards way, but, because we can't build policies until we have a collections agency that we go with, so, and then we'd have to figure out how we want to go about doing this, but we need an agency to go about first, to try to collect that. And yes, there is no money upfront, basically, just like our billing agency, they get 30% of whatever they collect.
Can I ask a couple naive questions?
Of course.
And you'll forgive me for, because they, they probably are very naive, but number, number one, with this collection, do they estimate what percentage of collections they, they hope to achieve? Do they, do they suggest that they're going to get like 40% or 50%?
I think DC Flannery can, he, so he's been working on this for quite a while, and I...
Like, what's their success rate, you know?
I'm terrible at proofreading. You're asking about their success rate?
Yeah, 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 what, what percentage do they hope to, to collect?
So they total an 82% collection rate on, on accounts. However, when it relates to medical debt?
Yeah.
We're receiving this debt, like Chief said, after 180 days, after our current billing company has, has processed it, has invoiced multiple times these bills, so by the time we receive this uncollected debt, it's already, it's already kind of old, so I, I would dare assume that that 82% collection rate probably is not that high?
Yeah.
When it's already that old.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the nature of the business.
Yeah, and, and do we have any kind of information about the, the economic means of the individuals, are these low-income individuals, are they people with main care? Like, what, what, who are we talking about? What, what is this population?
Yeah, right, good question there. There's a lot of that data that we just don't know.
Yeah.
I do have a fair amount of the debt where a lot of it is, is copays that are, that are not paid. Typically, those are like a main care Medicare situation, and the copays are left unpaid.
I got you.
There are a tremendous amount, I don't have an exact amount without, you know, showing a spreadsheet, but there's a fair amount of uncollected debt that are self-paid, so the uninsured.
Oh, yeah, yeah, even more so.
So that means the full amount of, of the EMS bill is not being paid at all.
Sure, I got you.
So, you know, how, why is that? It could have been one of those things where it could be somebody passing through, maybe from, and then they got into an accident in the city of Waterville, and...
And they don't care.
We don't, we don't have an accurate address, or maybe the billing company was unable to obtain their insurance information the first time around.
So, they left us hanging. Yeah. Okay, and now, an even more naive question. Is it, is it, is it at all possible to bundle and sell the debt as a lump? I mean, it's $500,000 worth of debt. Can we sell that, just offload it? Or is that kind of what we're doing here? Or is that not, is that, I mean, it's a naive question, I warned you.
That would be a question, Christina. If, that's, I'm a paramedic.
I guess my question is there, is there a, are there buyers out there for this?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking you.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
I mean, this is kind of the standard collection agency model.
Yeah.
Whether you can kind of take the whole thing and sell it, I don't know if there are buyers for, for medical collection debt out there. I don't, I have no idea.
We'll just get everybody up there. Anybody else?
I've never heard of them buying any in the municipal world, whether there is in the private sector, and take that over from the hospitals or private physicians, maybe.
Yeah.
But never in this scenario.
I don't know, I just wanted to ask, yeah.
I don't have a problem trying to reach out and check with some people, but everybody that I've spoken with in the past have gone with a secondary collection agency after their primary billing, so.
Sure, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, other than the, the risk of write-off, there's no real loss to us, I suppose. But, and then the write-off, what's our, how do we recoup, say, on 500, what would, what would the actual, what would we recoup in the write-off from that? So, if we, say we collected none of it, and we had 500K, and we wrote 500K off, what is the city actually going to recoup and benefit from the write-off?
Zero.
Zero.
Oh, zero.
If you write it off.
We're literally writing it off and saying.
But there is no, there's no tax benefit for us to the county, or to, there's like no way that becomes a credit, is just like.
It's actual revenue loss.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering is, you know, if you write it off, I assume that in the budget process, anticipating revenue. So, when you don't get it, then you're short, right? Fire department is short.
That's, I mean, when we, when we look at our budget, I mean, we haven't been doing this very long time, so we're just looking at what we're bringing in for revenue every year.
Right.
Which is, I'm sorry. Yeah, which is basically what, I mean, every fire department that runs an ambulance service like ours, that's basically how we do it. To put it in perspective, we know that Augusta, which is slightly larger than us, but our call volume is not far off from theirs, and they write off about a million dollars of debt every single year.
Augusta writes off a million bucks every year.
Correct. They do not even try to, to go after it.
Yeah, I wonder, it's just like, all these communities with this kind of, oh, I'm sorry.
My point is just that with this contract now, presumably, we're gonna have, we can anticipate more revenue.
It, it's really hard to say. We would think so, but we don't know. That's what we're trying to.
Well, so do we do it. Right?
We, we figured it was worth a try.
Yep.
We don't want it hanging out there. We have to do something with this debt sooner or later. We thought this would be the best process. And then, once we get with an agency, then we will have to build our policies with the agency moving forward, very similar to like we did with our billing company. So, we had to do this first, and then we'll build some policies, and then we'll, if you have, if you're asking me for a number, I have no idea.
No, I'm not asking for a number.
Really hard to tell.
The, the revenue then, that is collected, not just for these, but for all charges, returned to the fire department or to the city?
Well, it will go into general funds, where our ambulance revenue goes to now.
The fire department revenue.
Correct.
Line, okay.
Thank you.
All right, Council Finch?
So, two questions. What percentage of calls are currently to Waterville residents?
That, that.
Just a rough estimate.
Pertaining to the uncollected debt?
Well, that's my second question. My first question is just in general, or if you know, if you know that one.
I don't have, like, like what we're actually responding to.
Yeah.
I, I don't know offhand.
Okay.
But I can tell you that the percentage of uncollected debt currently.
Yeah.
Waterville residents make up about 47% of that.
About 47? Okay, and then, so essentially, in the best-case scenario right now, we would be collecting about 146,000. And that's the best-case scenario, assuming an 82% recovery rate. They keep 30%, and we don't go after Waterville residents. So, that's $146,000 to go after what you essentially have laid out are some of the most vulnerable citizens, where on main care, can't afford their copays, or are self, self-paid, they don't have insurance at all.
Yeah, so, if that's what your math says, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just.
There's no way for me to disagree.
Whittle the percentages down.
And, and, and to your point, the whole conversation about medical debt is, is a very, very sensitive conversation to have. So, we have to be very careful that, you know, we're not going after, you know, an elderly person who's disparaged, going after like a $300 copay or something like that.
Then that was, that's another, another question is, what is the average debt amount?
The average debt amount?
Yeah.
It's, it's variable. It's tremendously variable at this point. Well, as far as averages, I haven't calculated an average.
I assume it's gonna be different.
It's as high as, as a, as a copay of, you know, $100 to, you know, $2,000. And so there's a lot of variability in there.
I mean, just, I'd be interested to know what percentage of those that we would potentially be going after would be, you know, under $500, where we're turning around, we're harassing people, it's not gonna affect their credit report, and we're going after incredibly vulnerable people to hit a potential return of under $150,000.
Yeah, yeah, I read you there. I, and it would be part of our policy, whether or not this would even go to creditors. This doesn't even have to go to creditors. We're, we're asking an agency to kind of do the legwork in, in calling and doing some address tracing, phone tracing, just to get a hold of these folks and let them know, hey, you still have an outstanding medical bill. But, again, to your point, as far as, you know, moving forward with a collections agency, those are the policies we have to figure out.
And does, do those policies have to be approved by council, or is that something you guys are gonna do internally?
We would, that is a good question.
Yeah.
Because I can tell you, from our, our standpoint, you know, we have to have these further conversations with the collections agency as far as like, you know, what's it worth to us? Is $500, you know, and greater worth to us to try to collect and have to, and have to write off, you know, stuff less than that? Or should we go over like, you know, debt that we haven't even collected on through insurance or otherwise, you know, that's still a complete charge per account? Should we go after that? So, again, it's, it's a conversation we have to have and make reasonable policies. Again, medical debt is, it's very sensitive, and we know that. We deal with a lot of disparaged folks out there, whether they can pay or can't pay their bills, and so on and so forth. So, certainly not lost on us.
I just have a, I have a quick question. So, I'm trying to, and you may have answered this already, but what is Empire's methods? Is it just like giving somebody a call and being like, hey, you owe, you owe, you owe money? All right. And then, because I see here, obviously, it's 30%. However, if it goes to litigation, that, that fee increases to 50%. So, that's.
That's a, that's a whole other tier that we would have to go to.
Right.
So, what we're, what this is, is to do the legwork to see if they can get the money from them.
Okay.
If they can't, it's returned to us, and then we decide what we want to do from there. Either we can then write it off, or then we can, then they can go and try to collect it, and that will go on their debt after that. That will go on their credit report.
Is there like, is there like an actual, like, number of people? I understand it's like, you know, it's $500,000, that's what, that's basically what it boils down to. It's $500,000 in medical debt that needs, that we're trying to recoup here. Do we have like an actual, like, number of people that is? Because I'm just trying to get a scale of, because the thing is, I mean, are you guys, you know, Empire's gonna figure this out, and then, you know, John, Joe Q Public don't have the money, and they're gonna, I mean, I mean, do we have the resources to, to field? I don't know how many there are. Do we, do we have an actual number of, of people that, I mean, is it 1,000? Is it, is it 10,000?
I know, so, so from our previous billing company, MRS, who we had between, it was June of 2020 to April 30th of 2023, their debt report back to us was, it was 365 accounts.
Okay.
Some of those counts could be the same person.
Multiple times.
Yeah.
I got you.
Some fraction of these people are out of state even, or certainly, yeah.
They could be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. And, and there's some percentage of it where there's very low quality data as to who the individual actually is, and dubious whether we have the correct individual in the database. Yeah, so that's a difficulty. What, so since it's a, a fee-for-service type arrangement with enterprise, what, what are the criteria for a competitive bidding? Like, you know, because we're, they're, is it based upon that 30%? Or is it based upon their, yeah, what, how do you select them? How did you select?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to get like the best bang for our buck, of course. Userability, do I have access to like an online portal for somebody? Because I, I, I manage the billing on our side of the fence here at the fire department. So, I want to be able to access reports and stuff like that, and have a seamless way to interact with, with this, with this agency. Success rates, you know, success rates are important, but again, some of these debt collection agencies are based upon those, the debt collection early, early on in the, in the, in the debt. So, certainly, if someone hasn't paid a bill, it's gonna be a lot easier to track them down and make contact with them about that in the first 30 days, opposed to 180-plus days.
Yeah.
So, this is the first time we've had to kind of deep dive on this, so we just tried to look at it in totality and find out userability, the best bang for our buck, having a face-to-face conversation with these folks at these agencies, and, and, you know, try to figure out, you know, the best way to move forward with it. And really, and also to kind of bring the information towards, for you folks, too. You know, and if you think this is not the right, the correct pathway to go, then so be it. But we just need to have that, that sort of answer.
Council Green?
Yeah, the answer to that last question, I think, does depend a lot on the policies that are generated. So, I, I do recall having this conversation a couple of years ago about our policy, and that was when I believe the council wanted to make sure that we weren't collecting from our own residents. But, you know, I, I'm guessing that while many of, of these individuals are low-income, some of them may actually be able to pay. So, I think it's worth exploring and, and.
I agree.
But I, I would like to have a follow-up on developing the policies, so that we're not, you know, gouging people who really.
We can definitely do that. And I, you know, I think if we can just get with a company and talk to them, because they're, they may have their own internal policies to that.
Mm-hmm.
So, we will have to build policies with them. So, if, if you folks want, I think that, you know, if we do this, we will, we will build policies, and we will bring them to you to, to go over, and to make sure that we have the appetite for what we're looking at.
That's what I was gonna ask for also.
Yep. Absolutely.
I think we had that discussion, we were talking about when we do, and when we set up the cost recovery. I think that's very similar with the billing of that.
And it very well may be, yeah.
And I think that was, that's when we had that discussion.
Yep.
We set up that account.
And to go back to Council Kleepack, when we, when we looked at these two, another big thing with Empire is, they were the only ones that interface with our current billing company right now.
Oh.
So, what happens is, all this uncollected debt that's just kind of sitting there, we have to find a way to get this debt into some type of order to hand to Empire Collections. They will, the MRS stuff will have to do by hand. The, the, everything else that's been with QMC since 2023, they will be able to interface with them to get all that information for that. A lot less legwork on our end.
That's the debt that's more likely to be collected anyways.
That's probably the debt that's more likely to be collected if, if.
Yeah.
The newer it is, the more likely we can get something. You know, from my standpoint, it's, it's those accounts that we, we've seen zero dollars on, and not the ones that we've, we've already collected on, and there might be copays left behind. It's, it's the, it's the big amounts that we have collected zero on. And then, Waterville taxpayer ultimately bears the brunt of that, you know, of the tax liability that's left over, so, you know.
All right, wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Want to oppose? Six, one.
All right, thank you. And I will, I will make sure that when we, after we talk to this company, and we start rolling with them on building internal policies, that we will bring them back here before we move any, before we move forward any farther.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief.
That'll probably be number one, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be the number one report.
Christine's always number one.
I'll make sure I shave, I'll make sure I shave for that one. Thank you. Dropping down lower.
Yeah. All right, so we're moving right on to resolution 222, 2024.
Approve a memorandum of understanding with Health Reach Community Health Centers.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, and Chief, while you're there, why don't you just give us kind of a heads-up as to what this is?
Yeah, so luckily, I did not mess up the resolution on that one, this one.
Yeah.
So, basically, it's an MOU between Health Reach Community Health Centers and the City of Waterville. As you folks know, we have a community paramedicine program that operates three days a week, eight hours during that day, and we've been doing that since February of 2024. Some of the services we provide, but are not limited to patient home safety, fall risk assessments, med reconciliation, and compliance, vitals, med administration, testing, vaccinations. We work with the unhoused and substance use a lot, performing blood draws and obtaining other lab specimens. Basically, the, you know, what this community paramedicine program is built for is to help people when they get home, stay home. And that is very important to us. Because what happens a lot of times is our, these folks, they go home from the hospital, they don't have anybody there to help them, and they end up right back in the hospital again. This also helps out with our ambulance program by hopefully taking some of the burden and pressure off of our two ambulances that are running constantly. So, this program is very, very important to us and to the City of Waterville. What Health Reach Community Health Centers is looking to do is, is, well, give us, give us some services, help with some services, and we want to help them, too. We already partner with, with Northern Light, we partner with Main Gen, we partner with a lot of different places, but they're looking to just have a, an MOU built in, so that, so that we're all kosher with them.
Any councilors have any questions? All right, seeing none, can I get a vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? None. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Chief, enjoy the rest of your evening and vacation, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to order 223, 2024.
Accept grant funds from the Northern Border Regional Commission for infrastructure improvements at Quarry Road Trails.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Jennifer, yeah, please.
I think this is the last time. I will be here for a while. These two orders, I'll address the first one first, but basically, this is truly the first grant from MBRC that was awarded last December, and we just signed the grant agreement on November 12th. It was really contingent on raising the matching funds. These, so that's what this one is for.
Okay. All right, let's, let's deal with this one first, as we, so we don't get confused. Any questions with regards to the acceptance of these grant funds?
Can you just talk about how you raised the, the matching funds a little bit?
Yes. So, this was a really kind of, just grab this, interesting saga, because the, the first request to MBRC was for over $2.34 million. They came back with $7,12,500. So, then we had to adjust the scope of work considerably, and we had to raise the balance then for that adjusted scope of work. So, that meant going to all of these places outlined in the memo. We went to the Harold Alphon Foundation, the Bill and Joan Alphon Family Foundation, of course, the City of Waterville, the Friends of Quarry Road. So, we went to four other sources in addition to MBRC to make this project work.
And what was Friends' contribution there?
$20,000 in cash.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Nice work.
All right, moving on to 20, order 224, 2024.
Accept grant funds from the Bill and Joan Alphon Family Foundation for infrastructure improvements at Quarry Road Trails.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Yeah.
Just one comment there, that whereas MBRC was the first grant, this is the last one. This completes the construction package. And This completes the construction package, and that, and they, they expressed an interest in providing that gap kind of financing, and that amount is $75,659. We are also requesting in this that the city manager sign the grant agreement between the Friends, the city, and the Bill and Joan Alphonde Family Foundation.
I know how much work you put into this, and I really appreciate all the, all the work. I'm very excited for, yeah, the fruits of all this labor. It's gonna, it's gonna be, you know, the first step. It, I, this has been planned in one way or another since I've moved to Waterville, so just seeing that these money, this money finally fall into place and get to, get to begin to see this phased project materialize, it's very exciting. And I, I hope the rest of Waterville is as excited about it as I am.
Thank you. And I will say, as we progress, I think there will be more and more community involvement because these improvements make the site more accessible, and, and there will be corresponding events and activities and programming that we can build more around it as we, as we progress. The next step is Quarry Road reconstruction with the, with the introduction of public utilities to the site, so that we can move from porter potties and very tiny shelter to something else.
Yeah.
That's friendlier, user-friendly.
It wasn't like a good porter potty. Jeez, I'm just, all right, well, awesome. Thank you again. This is fantastic. Like, you know, Counsel Kleepak said, this is great, great stuff. Any other Counselor comments? Seeing none, can I get, all those in favor? Seven, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Order 225, 2024.
Approve the purchase and sale agreement.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Purchase and sale agreement. Okay. Yeah. All right. Chief, you want to talk about this real quick, since you're still here and didn't go back hunting?
I can, I can definitely give it a shot.
All right. We appreciate it.
Some of this stuff was, was started, obviously, before I took over, but, so there is a parcel or a small block of land out behind the fire station that basically, when you look at our parking lot, it comes across and then it juts into our parking lot, and then it goes back. As you can imagine, we have no parking at the fire station really whatsoever to speak of. It's really hard, especially when we have a lot of people there and they want to use the upstairs. And on top of that, we grew tremendously in the last couple of years, so we have a lot of people parking there that work there. So what we're looking to do is swap a piece of land with the LLC, thank you, and, and then they will be taking some parking stalls, and then we will be getting that piece of land, and then we will turn that into parking for us.
As, as someone who, who once was an on-call firefighter, I know the importance of, because you try to get there early, because if you didn't, you're, you're out of luck, so it's much needed.
It's becoming, it's become impossible to park out back. And on top of that, when you do look out back, some of that parking isn't ours anyways. It is actually one college ave's parking. And when that building was empty, we were using it, but now that it's not, we can't. So, and we actually, we have a really hard time with snow removal, too, because we have no place to put the snow that we're taking from out back. So you'll see, like, we did build a retaining wall there this year because we were having some, some runoff issues on the Union Street side, so we did put a retaining wall in there. That'll help a little bit with parking, but this, this would help tremendously.
How many parking spots is this gonna give you?
Without laying it out, I have no idea, but I'm gonna guess six, seven, eight more at least. It's not a tremendous amount, but it is an amount.
And a swap made more sense than just an outright purchase, or?
I don't, I don't believe they were willing to, they didn't just want to, we didn't just want to purchase it from, they wanted some, some land back, right?
Each party wanted some additional parking.
Gotcha. Yeah.
And, and the parcels being swapped are equal in size, .04 of one acre.
Okay.
Location, location, location.
It's very, it's very tiny, but it will help us out tremendously.
Great.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Wonderful.
Wait, if we're just, we're offsetting parking, we're essentially trading land, parking for parking? I'm looking at Google Maps right now. I'm just very confused about what's actually being traded.
So their, their piece of land, it juts into ours. It's like a big square that's missing out of our piece of land. Basically, we're just going to, if you draw a straight line right across the back of our land, we'll take that square back, and then they will be able to use parking stalls in place of that. In the, in the parking that's behind us that the city owns.
Okay. Yeah. Which would be that there. Okay. Okay, now it makes sense. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right. Wonderful. Any other comments, concerns? About a .4 acre space behind the fire department?
Make a point.
Sure.
About this particular issue, but I would request that we have more information on the agenda. I mean, a lot of people, we know what's going on, but a lot of people, these other items on our agenda are fairly specific as to what, you know, we're doing, at least generally what we're doing. And when I see something that says, approve the purchase and sale agreement, I don't know if that, you know, it doesn't tell people for buying a bulldozer or for buying land or whatever. I would just ask.
But, yeah.
I do. I do, and other people don't. I understand that, but a lot of people don't go beyond this. I'm just asking for a little more detail.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll get that ready, so when you come visit us, you can park there.
Yeah. That's fine. There's usually nobody parking in front of the base. I just park right there. It's usually pretty good.
Thanks again, Chief. That's the point, real estate.
All right. Yes. Moving on to Ordinance 226, 2024.
Move to adopt.
Amend, sorry, amend the zoning map, 357 Park Street, rezone.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. All right. Ann, do you want to, can you mind kick us off tonight? Just, this was a, just please, humor me.
I was expecting Mr. Lee to address this, but.
Well, you know, just so where we are today, like, so this was a request that had come in, we sent it to the planning board, the planning board sent it back, and their, their recommendation, the planning board's recommendation was?
Was not to approve residential D zoning, but to amend the contract zone.
Okay.
The planning board was interested in having some landscaping, screening for abutters, and they were also interested in not having traffic go from the church's parking lot into Park Place.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Bill, anything you want to add to that?
No.
Okay. All right, well, I will open it up to the Counsel for discussion. Any, any Counselor, any discussion?
Sure. It's, it's my word. I'll, I'll jump in here. You know, when this originally came up a year ago, I, I think, and then when we sent this to the, to the planning board, I think, you know, based on discussions with Counsel, we were kind of all really on the same page that we really want to protect the neighborhood, you know, and we're not opposed to, you know, any kind of plan for an ADA ramp, you know, for the church. We'd obviously, like, the church should be able to do with their property what they're looking to do, but ultimately, we do, I guess, I feel, feel like we have a duty to protect the, the neighborhood. And I think looking for along the lines of what the planning board recommended to amend the contract zone, to kind of put a parking plan by reference into the contract zone, so that there's just a parking plan kind of in place and on file, and then a buffer for the abutting resident that includes provisions if the garage is a move, just a fence to protect the abutting resident, so he doesn't wake up one morning and all of a sudden find out that literally his backyard ends at a parking lot, or a parking lot is suddenly just right there in his backyard. And then I think there are traffic considerations that we need to look at in terms of the, I don't want to, I don't want to call it unlimited access right now, but I would say unconstrained access right now onto Park Place and taking that into consideration and kind of having a plan for how this increased traffic would egress onto Park Street and Park Place. You know, and I'd, I'd really like to see, you know, the, the applicant here kind of meet with the city solicitor, kind of work on a solution for a contract zone, come to us with a contract zone that we can send to the planning board, have the planning board sign off on, and just have everyone go, go, go on their way, and that's, that's really where, where I sit right now.
Any other counselors want to make any comments at this time? I'll open it up.
Not right now.
Okay. I'll open it up to anybody else. If they, if you gentlemen want to speak to anything at this point, you're more than welcome.
Evening, counselors.
Good evening.
My name is James Montaloni. I'm an attorney representing First Church. Just like to, obviously, I think the council's become familiar with this over a number of different sequences. I think what I'd, what I'd like to emphasize to the council here today is that really at its core, what First Church is looking to do is to take a piece of property that currently has, has very limited functionality and be able to develop an ADA ramp so their congregants can get to church, and that they can actually be dropped off by that, by that ramp without having to walk approximately 350 feet around the building to reach the nearest ramp. This property was acquired for that purpose, and, and, but for it, it's extremely problematic. This has, has already been presented or has been heard by the council in the form of an amended contract zone, and that was, that request was denied. It's been, it's been brought back in an effort to really equate this usage as one that's consistent with the neighboring properties. And, and that's what's, that's what's being requested here today. We're requesting that it be, essentially, that the, the property be reincorporated into the residential D zone, which is, given the neighboring properties, it is the more restrictive of the two options. The council's previous determination as to the amendment resulted in the conclusion that the contract zone required the preservation of the vacant buildings. Now, asking, asking a church to perpetually maintain a vacant building imposes a substantial burden on the church's operation. A church is not in the business of, of maintaining and running properties, and it, and it's preventing them from being able to facilitate their congregants' needs, which is another burden on, on its exercise of religion.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Of our solicitor here, though, this is not, the, the persistence of the house is not in, in question. This is, this is not what we were, this is not what Counselor Finch was pointing out.
Counsel Green?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's the point I wanted to make as well. Initially, when we had the conversation, that was part of, of the conversation about changing the zoning of this property. I think what Counselor Finch was laying out was, we would really like to be able to rezone this property in such a way that you can get your ADA ramp. I don't think anyone on the council, and I'm speaking as the council chair, wants to force you to hang on to a property that you don't want. We recognize that that is, 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 is not something that's reasonable in this situation. However, we do want to make sure that the neighbors in this area have some buffer from additional traffic in the parking lot and the other items that Counselor Finch mentioned. The egress is a concern, so this was also part of the planning board's recommendation that we have a conversation about this and come to an agreement where those two interests could be met. And my understanding is that there was some dialogue with the city on a proposed contract zone that would meet those requirements. So I'd really like to see that proposal so that we can move on and complete our business here. I don't think anyone wants to drag this on any further, so that's all I have to say on that matter.
If I could add, yeah, privacy screen, egress, and a parking plan, and a parking map.
Right.
Which was what Counselor Finch had pointed out.
That's right. And at the planning board meeting, the last planning board meeting, you know, you mentioned the fact that you didn't want to keep having to go back and forth between the planning board and the city council. We are the final determiner of, of what that rezoning would look like, and I think we're saying to you, bring us a plan that has those elements in it, and we'll send it to the planning board, and we can come to an agreement.
Could I, could I very briefly add? The contract zone identifies that its purpose was created for the function of adding a spa into that.
Yeah, we're talking about a revised contract zone, right?
Understand, but if I can, if I can clarify, that was the original purpose of it, and there's language that says the, the intention of it is to preserve the residential neighborhood, that the residential, you know, the function of that neighborhood. Here, First Church is asking to simply, to be returned to the residential zone, recognizing that everything that First Church hopes to do with its property is, has already been adopted and recognized by this community, this council, as being appropriate uses, uses of residential property. And to, to impose new conditions feels arbitrary. But, but that said, I certainly recognize that this is a matter of the council's discretion and defer to your determination.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Then no other comments or at this point? All those in favor of this?
Is this the? First reading.
It's a first reading, so it's a show hands.
First reading, correct. So it's just a show of hands.
So all those in favor of rezoning this particular property is yes, and those not in favor are no. So all those in favor, all those opposed? Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Now, what I will say is that, now that this is done, like, again, the, we have to move on from the one, you know, so we would like to, again, enter. the one, you know, so we would like to, again, enter into the negotiation of the contract zone. Council is highly amendable to that, and I know that our attorney has reached out, so hopefully those, those conversations can continue. So, moving on to ordinance 227, 2024.
Amend the personnel ordinance, Chapter 56.
All right, wonderful.
Show that.
Second.
Okay, now, there is an amendment on this one as well, but we should probably discuss this a little bit before we get into making the fine tuning, right? Like, so I think, Brian, do you want to...
Yeah, that's fine with me. Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's quite something.
So we're gonna have a little presentation here.
Okay. All right. Oh, it's even got a cool title.
Oh, yeah.
Good?
Yep.
Good. All right, good evening again, council. So this is regarding a topic I emailed you about a few weeks back now, and this is something that the HR director and I have been discussing for a bit of time as we get more and more feedback and comments, and see what's happening out there in the world, both in the private sector and the municipal sector. So we're gonna talk this evening about a four-day work week where the hours are condensed into longer, basically four-ten's versus the current five-day schedule, and there'll be a lot of context and sort of a picture of what's happening out there in the world right now. So Patty, if you want to advance the slide. So, starting off, obviously, since COVID, the world has changed quite a bit, and we're seeing a lot of different things when it comes to not only employee expectations, but what employers are offering out there. So KMA is a human resources consulting firm based in Maine, widely used in the municipal world, and this is a recent survey that they did this year, 2024, and this includes both private sector and public sector employees. But the big takeaway from this slide is 89% of employers are offering some form of flexible work arrangement. About a quarter are offering full-time, in total, remote work for some or all of their employees, so about one in four out there. And just in this area, the state of Maine is a big one. There are entire state departments that are completely remote and are staying remote. And you see, only 3% of employees surveyed, it said work schedule flexibility is unimportant to them. So this is, this is a big deal, and we are competing against these folks every day for what is a more and more limited and increasingly competitive pool of applicants for municipal jobs. We, we face this every day. It doesn't mean we're not sometimes getting good people, it means the applicant pools are, are down, they are rather paltry in many cases, and it often involves us putting it out a second or even third time round. You know, just a good example, I don't want to single out any other city employees, but just my position, for example, you only got 13 candidates for my position. That's terrible. I'm not gonna say it's because of the schedule, but the point here is we need to have as much of a level playing field as possible with who we're competing against out there. And right now, Patty, if you want to advance the slide. The basic takeaway is, you know, I'm reporting to you that certainly in this aspect, Waterville is not competitive with most of our municipal peers out there and also the private sector. So we lose to the private sector due to a lack of remote work and hybrid work opportunities. We just don't offer that and really can't. In many of our departments, we only have a small fraction of our workforce who really could be eligible for remote or hybrid work. When you have that sort of arrangement, it also creates a lot of, you know, discrepancies and sense of unfairness between employees of who's able to work remotely, who's not, who has to be here. But, you know, we're here to serve the public, we have a lot of customer-facing departments, most of us are, and we need to be here. And so that's just difficult for us to absorb. But we're now losing to most of our municipal peers in terms of schedule, both in not offering a four-day schedule, which most, not all of our peers are now offering, but also the length of days for those who currently remain on a five-day schedule. So Portland, Bangor, for example, Auburn. So Portland and Bangor are only open 8:30 to 4:30 every day, and Auburn is only open 8:30 to 4:00. So their hours are a lot shorter than what we have existing also. So we're losing even to other five-day-a-week communities out there, and this is, there is a domino effect happening. I know several of these communities that are currently still five are having discussions like this about going to four. So we're, we're losing to the private sector, we're losing to our municipal peers, and as I said, and Bobby Joe can attest to this, is exceedingly competitive out there for municipal employees. There is a huge retirement wave happening, and there also is just a drop-off in the number of younger people who are interested in getting involved in government, especially at the municipal level. I would blame some of that from just sort of the vitriol and the divisiveness of the national conversation that trickles down. And you see it also just in terms of those stepping forward and wanting to volunteer on city boards and committees or run for council. It is an increasingly tough world out there, and we're seeing it in municipal employees. We've also had programs, like at the University of Maine, for example, they've dropped their public administration program that was a good feeder system into the municipal world. So we're seeing a lot of these, these things impact us. So the concern is if we do not take steps to improve our standing, we're going to continue to not be able to attract top talent, and it will continue to hemorrhage good employees to other more attractive opportunities. And Bobby Joe can attest to this, too. Just in the past month or two months, I would say, we have lost two really great employees in two different departments that took opportunities that were either hybrid or remote work opportunities, and Bobby Joe knows of several others. So we are losing good people to more attractive opportunities out there. And again, we really can't compete very much on the hybrid or remote, remote aspect, but we can compete on schedule. And so as the national employment market has changed, and this has happened, you know, nationwide and worldwide, especially since COVID, the expectations of work have changed, and we unfortunately, you know, depending on how you look at it, fortunately, we need to continue to evolve with the world, and right now, we are just not evolving. Patty, slide. So just a, and I included in your, in your packet, it's a much more thorough listing of who is, you know, participating in this now. This is just a small sample, but you see, both of our neighbors on both sides, Winslow and Oakland, have been doing this for a number of years now, but larger cities are doing this also, Lewiston, Bitterford, South Portland, you know, Gorham. You know, Bitterford, in the case of, of Bitterford, they have gone further, and they are not even doing four-ten's. They have just cut hours out of the week, but they're still paying people for 40. We're not proposing that. We're proposing to keep the numbers of hours of work the same, but just obviously to condense into what we're gonna propose as a 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM schedule, which you'll see goes beyond what even most of our peers doing this are, are doing. It's another half an hour. So there have been a lot of conversations. HR has done some, some great outreach to departments to gauge interest, to understand concerns, and there has been near-unanimous support and great interest and excitement to do this with our staff, which is a huge morale piece. You know, there were, I would say, you know, one or two who were, who were less excited. It's difficult to get to 100% of her, but, you know, we're, of course, interested in hearing all concerns, but there is, I'd say, 99.8% strong interest from, from our employees to do something like this. This is important, so this is the, the customer service transactions by day, just to get a flavor of what our busiest days are at City Hall. So this is the customer service transaction count at customer service. So Tuesday is actually our busiest day. This goes back to February of this year in total. So Tuesday is our busiest day, followed by Monday, Friday is in, close behind in number three, and then Tuesday and Wednesday are our less busy days. I mean, not significantly off, but just in terms of what we see for, for numbers, Tuesday is actually our, our busiest day. So, Patty. So, you know, just some other things, you know, for context, you know, obviously, I would say the number one reason we're looking at this is to keep pace with the market and what our municipal peers out there are doing and to bring us in line with that. This is also a really strong tool for recruitment and retention and keeping people here. But there is also, you know, some benefits to the public that I do want to highlight, and, and that is that you are going to be able to come into City Hall both before and after normal business hours, earlier and later. And we have heard comments, and, you know, I think the mayor actually forwarded me a few months back some comments, of people that basically said 4:30 is too early for City Hall to close. We work until 4 o'clock, or we work until 4:30, or we work until 5:00, and we can never make it over to City Hall after work. This gives for four days a week, people more opportunity to come after work. You know, we're open from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, it's a long day. It gives people, you know, 7:00 AM is before many people start work in the sort of normal, you know, nine-to-five world out there, and they have opportunity after work. So there is that flexibility for the public to come in both earlier and later. As I said, this is really, you know, also to bring the city in line with our peers. The market has changed, we are falling further and further behind. There is certainly promoting an employee well-being aspect to this and improving morale. As we've heard, there is strong, strong support to do this. Recruitment, as I said, you know, for us, is the biggest one on here, because, you know, I can tell you, our applicant pools, you know, while we are pulling some, some good candidates, it is overall, in my view, not overly impressive. And that's not to put down any current employees we have, as I said, we're still getting good people, but we need the numbers in, and if we want top talent here, we have to be competitive. And this was, you know, brought up also from some of the other places that have done this, and this has been, you know, kicking around the municipal world now for, for eight or 10 years, but it's really accelerated in pace, as I said. There is a piece also that you're reducing the number of days people are driving here and commuting here, the utilities, electricity and heat being used in our buildings, you know, we would, in effect, be 20% in, in reduction from where we currently are. So another small piece, if you're concerned about sort of the environmental aspect of everyone getting in their cars and driving here every day and heating our building with fossil fuels, et cetera. So that's, that's, you know, a small point on this, but, but it is out there. So this is what it would look like, this is where we currently are in our five-day schedule, and this is where we would be with the four days, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. You know, and as I said, this is actually a little bit longer than what most of our peers out there are doing with the four-day week, but we certainly recognize that we are all here to serve the public, and we need to be accessible to the public, and so I think, you know, it's important that we're open. And so this is 42 hours a week, the new schedule, that we would be open.
Wait, can I ask a question on that slide? The one back about the current hours and the, so for, that's the schedule that the office opens at?
Those are City Hall hours.
Those are City Hall hours, but that's not necessarily staff hours, right? Do staff come in at 7:00 AM to be open at 7:30 right now? They just roll in at 7:30 and unlock the doors? Oh, okay.
We do cash-ups in turns so that where someone is available to be open at 7:30 AM.
Yeah.
So we all do work, we walk in right before 7:30.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't asking people to come in at like 6:30 in the morning or something like that. No, they're just gonna roll in right at 7:00.
Linda Cody comes in early generally.
Okay.
And can help with cash-ups, and she usually leaves at 4:00.
Okay, okay.
So I did want to recognize Bobby Joe also to say some things about just the employee outreach and some of the feedback she's heard, and maybe just some of the other, you know, details on it. And, and thank you for, for all your work on this.
Yeah, so I, I have spoken with the majority of the staff, I've spoken with the supervisors, and there's a lot of very excited staff about this. It does give that work balance, work-life balance that they're looking for. As Brian mentioned, we have lost some staff to four-week department or other municipalities or going to hybrid schedules that we can't compete with. And I think moving to this schedule, we've actually even reached out to the unions that would be affected with this. So we're looking to move to this schedule for City Hall, and then we would have to consider what we would do with other departments later. Like Public Works, right now, would have to stay on a five-day schedule. This is the City Hall schedule right here that we're looking at, but...
So how many people?
We have, I want to say, I'm counting my head, sorry, going through every office right now. Patty, you have seven in your department upstairs? Eight, seven, nine, sorry.
Thirty people.
Yeah, maybe like thirty. Yeah, in, inside of City Hall. So the other ASME employees that work outside of City Hall would be offered this option, but they'd also be offered the, to stay on their five-day work schedule, just because they work for public safety departments that are open 24/7. So they'd still be allowed to keep their five-day if they chose to do so. But we can't do that for anybody inside of City Hall, wouldn't, we'd lose that whole savings from...
The benefit of closing the building for the day.
Yes. I'm for it.
Yeah, let's do it.
I am.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yeah, I, I think this is a terrible idea. Everything that you've presented to us, almost everything, is about serving the administration, about serving the bureaucracy, if I can use that word again. This, you, you barely touched on how this services the public, who we're working for. This council is not here to serve the administration, the council's here to serve the people of the city. And everybody I've talked to about this when I first heard about it is totally against it. You know, the attitude is more taxes, less service. That's what I'm hearing. Now, one of the problems that you're gonna run into, and I spoke to someone from one of these communities that is using it, one of the difficulties is that to think that we're gonna need no one on a Friday, ever, is just, is ludicrous. Someone's gonna have to come in because of a particular situation, we're gonna have to have somebody there, somebody here, so we're in an overtime situation when we do that. The other thing is, if this is not a good idea, I may be totally wrong, but if this is not a good idea, as much as you described it being loved by the employees, it'd be pretty hard to change it, wouldn't it? Pretty hard to go back to where we were, if we get so much outrage or people upset with the fact that you can't even do anything at City Hall on a Friday, a business day. So going back would, would probably be impossible. A lot of those communities that you mentioned, I've talked to some of those people, they are not satisfied the way it's shaken up. Now, to say that we have to be more competitive and all that stuff, has there been a retention study done in the city of Waterville? Do we have a report on why these people are leaving, what the turnover rate is in comparison to other organizations? I mean, you didn't even know, you didn't even know the number that discovers. So I don't think this has been well thought out. It's been really kind of slantless. I know what we're looking at is actually ordinance change. I mean, it would have been nice to have a discussion about this beforehand, to get the feeling of the council. So, you know, for that and for many other reasons, I, I think, I just think this is a, you know, a bad idea. The fact that it's primarily for staff, if you close on Friday and there's a Monday holiday, that's four days, which people are gonna have to wait for services from the city. Now, if we're doing it for the people of Waterville, maybe Wednesday would be the better day to be closed, but I understand what we're doing it for. We're not doing it for the people of Waterville. And I've had a problem with a number of things like that, where we're working for the administration. We're not. We're counselors representing people, the taxpayers and the citizens of the city. So while it's really nifty that all these other towns are doing it, and we have to compete with them and all that stuff, I, I haven't heard really what the issue is. What's the problem? I understand that some of the people that left, at least of those two you made, I don't, I'm not sure who you're talking about, but left because they got promotions. They, they got a better job. There was no way for them to, no immediate way for them to be promoted within the city. That happens, they get a better job, congratulations. But to suggest that people are leaving just to be able to work a less, you know, four days instead of five, I have not heard that directly. And I don't think, you know, I, I'd love to see a report on that before we make such a major decision. There's no going back on this, folks, right? Once it's done, it's done. And if we hear from people and people are upset, there's really no going back unless we just, you know, set this up for six months. So, and these hours that you're talking about, they are winter and summer? No changes in the summer?
Correct.
Okay. And it affects some other people in the police department and some other people at Public Works, possibly?
The administration, if they choose to go to a four-day.
So not just the staff people, but now we're talking about management, being able to go to a four-day work week, right? Are you gonna be here, Brian, on Fridays?
Obviously, obviously, those public safety departments have operated their own schedules.
I understand that, but my question is, is, are management people gonna be working Friday?
No, this will be across the board, except for Public Works and the Public Safety Department.
So neither one of you will be here...
Obviously, obviously, those public safety departments have operated their own schedules.
I understand that. My question is, is, are management people going to be working Friday?
No, this will be across the board, except for Public Works and the Public Safety Department.
So neither one of you will be here on a Friday?
That's, all employees are treated alike in this regard, yes. If you're, if you're, if you're in public safety, obviously, you already operate in your own schedule, or Public Works, they operate in their own schedules. So it would not apply to them.
Right, all right.
And just to clarify, to be clear, I mean, I think I was pretty clear. You know, the only benefit to the public with this is the expanded hours in those four days beyond normal business hours. The number-one reason to consider this, as I said, is about recruitment and retention. And we're not competitive, and we're losing people, and our municipal peers are mostly doing this. I can say the movement continues. We are not leading in this regard. We are lagging. So it's my job in this position to bring these issues before you and have this conversation. That's why we're here doing this. And, you know, I'm reporting what's happening out there in the world and with our municipal peers, and this is what's happening. So I think we can certainly continue as-is, but Waterville is not going to be recruiting, in many cases, top talent, and we're not going to be in a level playing field with what's happening out there. And that's not us making this up, that's just what's happening out there in the world. And, you know, some people may like this, some people may not, but the fact is, it's happening. And, you know, to completely just ignore it, I think is not of great, you know, sort of strategy in looking at the future, how we're going to get good people here. We need good people here. I will, I will tell you, I came from a community in southern Maine. The applicant pools are not nearly as strong here as down there. So we're already at a disadvantage geographically and in many other ways. So how are we going to stay competitive in this world? How are we going to at least be on a level playing field with our peers and with the private sector? That's the question, and that's why we're here.
And I didn't answer that question by saying, you know, we studied the issue. What's going on? Maybe it's facilities, maybe it's conditions, maybe, I don't know. I haven't seen, we haven't seen any report. It sounds as though, it sounds as though you're suggesting that going to a four-day work week is the magic pill.
It's not going to solve our problems, but at least make us a level playing field in this regard with other communities. But yeah, there's pay, there's benefits, there's commute times, there's lots of facts.
And I understand this, I, you know, your job is to take care of the staff and whatever, and I think our job is a little bit different.
I'm hearing a lot of the same things, Jake, that Mr. Gagnon's saying. I remember when it was eight to five, because I would come in off the interstate from BIW and try and make it here before 5:00 to register my vehicle on a Friday afternoon because I got paid on Thursday. You're turning, you're shutting down, most people I know get paid on Thursday so they can try and take care of their business on Friday. Now you're closing on Friday. That, that's the crux of my, and I would like to see us go back to eight to five instead of 7:30 to 4:30. If people are getting out of work at 4:00, 4:30, that at least gives them a 30-minute window to try and get across town or something to take care of their business at City Hall.
I agree with you. That's what used to happen. The problem is, the world isn't, isn't doing that anymore. That's the problem, yeah.
I'm also hearing things, and this has more to do with the hybrid and working-from-home stuff. If you're, a study presented stated that people working hybrid or working from home, you're only getting five and a half of eight hours out of them, whereas if they're actually having to show up, you're at least going to, might get seven out of eight out of them. You're not getting as much. And a third question, if we go with this, what are they giving up? It's a perk, but do we get something in return? That was a question asked of me. What are we, what are the people going to get if we give this to them?
Council Finch?
So I guess two questions. Why, in presenting this, did you jump straight to a four-day work week, I guess, instead of offering a reduction in operational hours instead? Why was that the decision?
Well, I think if we're talking about service to the public, if we're cutting hours to City Hall, that's, that's another, that's another conversation. If you're looking at just dropping hours that were available, this, you know, the point of this is, yeah, we have four longer days instead of five shorter days. But if we're talking about cutting hours, that's a different conversation. And when we talk about service to the public, that would be important.
Well, I was just wondering why that was the jump. And so it seems the jump is on, you wanted to preserve the number of operating hours that were up under the public.
Yeah, we're really just taking what's, what's already happening out there and modeling it here. So this is what's, what's happening. Biddeford, for example, like I said, they've, they're still paying people for 40, but they did cut number of hours to the public. But there's no cost savings there because they're still paying them the same.
Yeah, and then I guess my second question is, why, is it just because everyone else was doing Friday, you picked Friday? It seems like if we were going to cut a day, it seems logical, it would be Wednesday for some of the reasons that Tom is saying. We do have a significant number of people. You know, it's almost our second busiest day is Friday.
So you can see from the list, I'd say 95% are closed on Friday. That's the most common day. Yeah, our, our numbers, Friday is number three for busy days. Wednesday was the least busy. So, you know, I guess there could be some strategy there. But if you look at, you know, this pretty long list, it looks like about 95% are closed on Fridays. There is, I think it was Belgrade is closed on Wednesday.
I'm going to assume Belgrade's least busiest day was Wednesday when they made the decision. I mean, it makes sense. People come in at the beginning of the week, they come in at the end of the week.
Tuesdays are busy.
Yeah.
So I just want to start by saying, I do appreciate that if this is the landscape out there, that it is hard to compete. I am concerned, however, we've talked, I'm concerned about having a Friday off, a Monday holiday, that is a long stretch where business isn't conducted. And I also am wondering if, if Wednesday was floated as a, as a possibility when you talk with staff, or if it was just Friday? Because it does look like, you know, if, if we were closed on Wednesday, then, then that would mitigate, you know, long stretches where there's no one working at City Hall. And finally, I want to ask you if, you know, if you've talked to, I mean, have you talked to people in these other communities? And I'm particularly Lewiston, which did do a pilot, and they're a large city, so they're closed on Friday. What were they finding?
So I can tell you, in my, you know, time in this business, I have talked to many who have done this, in particular, Biddeford. I was in very close contact with them when they did this change several years ago. And again, this was dropping the number of hours available to the public also, not just the street, moving to four days. You know, and the big question is, what kind of public feedback would there be? And in each of these cases, Southport, another one I heard, you know, directly from quite a bit, they were expecting kind of more with kind of pitchforks and torches, and it never materialized. The public was very accommodating to it, because the public is also participating in remote and hybrid work opportunities and flexible schedules. And some of the feedback was almost like, well, you know, finally, you guys are coming around to this because it's so commonplace out there. So the feedback, you know, and this has been presented many, many times at the main municipal association conferences and all those places, the feedback overall has been generally pretty positive in most of these communities. There's always some. There's always going to be some negative feedback. And I'm not saying it's all positive. But from the managers and the counselors I have talked to in communities who have done this, even ones that have cut hours to the public, there has not been any significant public outcry or resistance, and it's gone fairly smoothly.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to add, I'm not, I'm not so concerned about initial reaction, because of course, a change is a change, and people will, will get upset. But, you know, I, I mean, my concern is just how the impact is on, on operation of the city. And I guess, you know, not opposed to it, but I think it's reasonable that we do have the discussion, and I think it's, it's reasonable to consider whether Wednesday, closing Wednesday makes, makes sense, given that it's the least busy day.
Counselor Kleepak?
Well, I am in favor of this myself. And a couple of points that I wanted to address was the notion that it's not, that this is purely for the sake of the administration and not for the sake of, of the city, the residents. Making sure that the city of Waterville is staffed with the best possible service providers is fundamentally in the service of the community. And if we're, if we're being faced, it cannot be ignored that we are being faced with recruitment and retention challenges. You know, the assertion was made that once you try something, that you can't claw it back. That is, that is not the case, right? I mean, if we're, if, if there is some massive public outcry or the operations of the city are not able to proceed apace, then the city said, well, we tried that, let's go back, and let's try something else. Let's go back to the way it was, whatever, eight to five work week or whatever it happens to be. But, you know, we are serving the public by being able to have the best possible personnel. And I can tell you for certain that, just my time on the council, I have seen the profound impact of having the right personnel in the right job, right? Like, this city definitely needs top-quality personnel. When you don't have top-quality personnel, it falls on its face, and when it has top-quality personnel, it runs like a top. So, you know, whatever we can do to make that happen without, you know, having large budgetary expenditures makes a lot of sense to me. And then secondly, we are expanding, so to the Council of McCormick's concern about getting here in time to do city, conduct city business with a newly cashed paycheck, we're open till five, we would be open till 5:30 now. So we're extending hours and accessibility within the workday. What is it, what is it, good does it do to a worker on a Friday when they can't be there for the majority of those hours that the office is open, right? Whereas in this new scenario, we have an extended window where people who do work till 5:00 PM can come in and actually conduct their business. In this, in the current situation, they can't do that, right? So I think that it is not correct to say that these changes are purely for the service of the administration. But beyond that, the people that work for the city of Waterville are people as well, and they are part of a modern workforce and deserve to be able to participate in a, in a modern working environment. So from my perspective, I understand the concerns, and it is, I think, the most compelling concern of all of them that have been raised to me, unless Counselor Gagnon has some others that he hasn't enumerated yet, the most compelling concern is the notion of a four-day closure in, in the rare occasion of a Monday holiday. But imagine that there could be strategies, I mean, we have the HR director here, there may be strategies to deal with that kind. Oh, oh, hi, hello. Please, help me. Am I going out of bounds here?
To address two of the concerns raised, one being the idea that there's a four-day weekend, some communities will take most of the Monday holidays and make them be floating holidays, so the employees are working, so you don't get into a three-day work week. Across the river, for example, last week, Veterans Day, what, the employees worked on Veterans Day, but they, they have a holiday they can take, arranged with their supervisor at some other time during the year. Another concern being raised is, you know, how is the public going to react to this? It's hypothetical right now. And if there's a concern about adopting this and how do you ever take it back, it is possible for you to adopt it and have a sunset provision on it several months out and evaluate how in fact it has performed. Because right now, it's hypothetical. Is this going to be a problem? Is that going to be a problem? And if, remember back when we had the purple bag issue?
Yeah.
The council adopted purple bags, but said they're going to put it out to a referendum after, I think, 10 months, almost a year. So the public, because everybody was screaming about this and that, but nobody knew for sure. And so that's what the, that's what the council did. It adopted it on a trial basis and then put it out to a referendum. And after everybody got to see how it worked, it turned out, at least in that instance, that people liked it. And it, I mean, that, that was approved by about an 80% majority, which is amazing. I'm not saying that will be the same thing here, but in just in terms of addressing concerns, these are two ideas you might want to think about. I'm not here actually giving legal advice, but I just, I represent a number of communities, and I've seen some of these issues, and there are ways of, other ways perhaps, of addressing those concerns.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor DeBrito?
I just want to pretty much follow up anything Kleepak was saying. I'm in favor of it. And the reason is, is my other job, my previous job, they did go to a four-day week. And it's not just here in Maine, other states are doing it too. Rhode Island is also doing it too. And for me, as a mom, when they gave me that Friday off, I was able to put all my kids' appointments on Fridays. So I had a specific day that I knew for sure I was not working, and I was able to do stuff with my kids, like doctor's appointments or whatever comes, even my own personal appointments, I was able to designate one specific date for it. And for me, those other days, Monday to Thursday, I was, I was excited. I was excited to know that I had one day off that week. So, and I also saw, like, and seeing other, like, other my colleague, like, other my friends that do have four-day weeks, gives them flexibility to just take care of themselves. We live in a world right now where mental health is out on the rise. We have a lot of things going on, and for people to take time for themselves is crucial. And I'm seeing accommodating, not just COVID, but just accommodating the way we live right now. And a lot of people are going either four-day week, or they do have that option of working remote that one day. So I do see this as an opportunity. I do see this as a, as a way for us to take care of our staffs. So I'm going, I'm in, I'm totally in favor of it.
You know, and I, I understand the concerns that everyone is having, however, you know, I think that, you know, I think Brian and everyone has done their due diligence in regards to, you know, keeping the, the employees of the city their best, best interests. I think work-life balance is important. I think people, you know, as Counselor DeBrito has, has mentioned, you know, being able to have a designated day, you know, I, I myself, I, I've been in shift work all my life, so I, I work a four-day work week, and it's, you know, when it comes to childcare, appointments, and other obligations of, of the day-to-day minutia of life, you know, having that one day is, is sometimes, you know, really, really important. But I know that, you know, and I understand, you know, we do owe it to the, to the citizens of Waterville to, of course, ensure that services are being met. And, you know, being open Monday through Thursday for 10 and a half hours, I think that would provide our citizens and the, and the individuals of Waterville an opportunity to get whatever city business done accomplished. As far as paychecks are concerned, I mean, I could be wrong, but, you know, I think like 99% of everybody is kind of direct deposit. Am I, I mean, I haven't seen a paper check myself in a hundred years. So I, I would just go with that. If, if we are, however, split on city councils, so, you know, in regards to this conversation, perhaps tabling this to a different day in regards to a floating holiday idea, or perhaps a sunset provision, or a trial phase, just so that the city employees and the citizens of Waterville can get a feel of what's going on, I think would be more beneficial going forward.
Was that a motion?
Well, I mean, before we, I mean, this is a...
Not yet.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is, this is an ordinance which does require two votes.
And just Bobby Joe, as, I mean, we talked about the floating holiday, and that, that is an option. I think it's sort of straight up easier just to kind of handle it as we do now, but we talked about floating holiday, and that's, that's an option. You can do floaters instead.
Counselor McCormick?
When were you hoping to have this start?
Well, what I proposed in the memo was, was just January 1 of, of next year to make it sort of easy, but there's no hard, you know, hard and fast deadline.
Counselor Finch?
Yeah, I was, I, just to the idea of floating holidays, I work for a company that we only get, out of the 12 recognized federal holidays, I think we only... get, out of the 12 recognized federal holidays, I think we only get five of them recognized, and the other seven are floating, floating holidays. And I actually prefer the floating holidays to, I mean, sometimes it's a little annoying to be like, oh, my gosh, I've gotta work Veterans Day, or Martin Luther King Day, or stuff like that, but like, having that flexibility, I think that's just another perk. So if we're looking towards recruitment and stuff, I mean, that was, it was a key, not a key thing, but it was, it was definitely one of the tipping points when I took the job I have now, to be able to be like, oh, I have floating holidays, I'm not forced into this rigid schedule. So I don't know that we need to postpone for that. I think that is something that, you know, we could spend some time maybe, maybe working on and crafting a potential amendment.
Part of the implementation, if you wanted to go with the floaters, we can certainly do that, it's been discussed already.
Yeah, I think the big concern for several of us is that four days off, and floating holidays kind of eliminates that concern. But I also would like to ask staff about Wednesdays, and give them the option. I don't think it's ever been presented to them for Wednesdays.
Isn't like, sort of polling staff and seeing how they feel about Wednesday versus-
Well, because you asked them how they felt about a four-day week, was that just a day neutral, or was it, how would you feel about Fridays off?
I think it was presented as this.
Everybody wants a three-day weekend.
95% of them are doing Friday.
Right, because who's gonna turn down a three-day weekend? But I just, does the conversation shift if it becomes closing on our least busiest day?
And, I mean, I have experience on working a four-day, four-day workday, and for me, I think Monday to Thursday flows better. When you take that day off, you work Monday, Tuesday, you got Wednesday off, trying to come back, that's hard. I mean, I think it flows better when you do Monday to Thursday. I mean, it flows a lot.
What about Tuesday through Friday?
All right.
You know, so, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of iterations of what schedule you can work and whatnot, so, like, but.
It seems like, you know, a floating holiday or some other day other than Friday, I mean, they're addressing the same concern, right? And in my mind, a floating holiday is, yeah, it would be a preferable solution. You know, I don't know if we can get everybody over the line with that, but that would be my, that would be my inclination.
I think the floater is totally acceptable, and like I said, there's a couple of ways to do this, and, you know, if the council's interested in seeing the floating to avoid those potentials, where you have that very short week with the Monday holiday, that's, that's something we can absolutely look at adopting.
What would, can you give us a pro-con there?
I think part of the con with the floating would just be staffing all the departments. So like Winslow does, it's not full staff on those days. So public-facing departments, they're gonna have to, if somebody doesn't volunteer, they're, they're gonna have to force somebody to come in on holiday. Some of those people have children that don't have daycare, because daycare's closed on holidays and schools are closed. So that was kind of one of the things that we, when we were talking about, do we do floaters or not, that was a consideration. Another consideration we took into account when we were looking through the Monday through Thursday, what day of the week, is our IT services.
Yeah.
We, we contract with Winslow in Oakland, and they're on Monday through Thursday, and it just, it was in alignment with them, just gave our IT staff that same schedule, so it was just one other little piece that we looked at.
And, because I have kids in the school system too, the Friday makes sense, because the school is also taking a Friday off, like, for, in service. So it does make sense, especially here, I mean, here in Waterville, it makes sense to have the Friday off.
I agree.
All right. Any members of the public wish to weigh in, or any comments and concerns in the public? Joe?
You deal with yours. So, Joe Grockmal is a private citizen. So when I moved here, you know, and was starting to get settled in, I had to change a lot of things, right? I had to go get a new license, that was one of the big-ticket items for me. And the great challenge that I had with that is the fact that the DMV, for me to get down to Augusta, works the same hours that we do. So I came in extra early one day, worked on some stuff, you know, Brian was, you know, lucky enough, you know, to kind of flex that for me. I'm obviously not hourly, but I was able to go down there and, you know, get my license in a timely manner. I had to switch it over within 30 days if I wanted to be compliant with the law and be able to drive around and be active in the community. Now, obviously, that's, you know, one specific case for me personally, but if, you know, I was an hourly worker, who didn't have a boss who was understanding or willing to, you know, work that sort of thing out, I would have been out of luck, frankly, or would have had to come up with some other option. And I just think, you know, when you look at that, you know, it's flexibility for the public, again, you have greater, you know, ability to go in and for people to, you know, get their business done, and at the same time, it also frees up opportunities for staff. And the second piece I would add on this as well is, you know, when we're thinking about recruitment or bringing in that top-tier talent, first, I think it's, you know, misguided to look at something where it says someone works remotely, and therefore they're not working as hard, or someone's working a four-day week, and therefore they're not working as hard. I worked a virtual job at Deloitte, I worked 90 hours a week virtually. So again, it's, you know, just because the style is different doesn't mean that people are working any, you know, less hard.
No one said that. No one here has said that.
The comment about-
That's a hard word.
No, no, I didn't say I was a hard worker. I'm just repeating the results of a study that was done, that stated that people working remotely, the employer gets five and a half out of, five and a half actual production hours out of being paid for eight, as opposed as if they're in the cubicle, or if they're actually on the job site, they get seven out of the eight. And you may work 90 hours, you may work 90 hours, but you're gonna tell me you labored? Well, that's, you may be the exception. I'm just clarifying what-
Point of order here, I think we've strayed from the point at hand.
My apologies.
No, no, you're fine.
No, I just think, I don't think we need to get into a debate about whether people are efficient working remotely, but.
Remote's not on the table. Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, of course.
Anyway, I guess my closing point in this, and I'm sorry, you know, again, to have strayed there a little bit, my point in it is just, if you're gonna try and bring in top talent, having this as an option and having this available to people, it definitely will appeal to certain people, and they'll have that flexibility to, you know, be motivated when they're in and really deliver positive results, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I don't know if this would work based on how many employees there are, but if some people, if there was a four-day work week for people, but the, the city hall was open five, and some people took Monday or whatever day, and some people took Friday or whatever day. Now, I don't know if that is even feasible, but it's something that came to mind.
It seems like a good thought, but, you know, the problem there is that you have two days of reduced capacity, you know, every week, not just on a, on a holiday week or something like that, you know, so that, that seems like a good thought, but, yeah, it would be very hard, two days a week to maintain a structure like that, I would guess, I mean, you'd have to.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Gagnon.
Much of what I've heard through this debate talks about the administration, the employees. And, I mean, my whole point was that I didn't think this was good for the people who elected us, people of this city, to not have availability, have no services available at City Hall on a business day, when many of the businesses downtown are open. And one of the things that, you know, I think was said earlier is that it's a terrific idea, because I can schedule my appointments on that day, blah, blah, blah. Well, you couldn't schedule getting your registration done on that Friday, because we would be closed. And there are people who have needs. I also believe that we're gonna, on whatever day is picked, if there's gonna be a day off, there will be leakage, there will be people who will have to work those days. You know, to suggest that, if we've got a crisis in the city, that Brian isn't gonna be here on a Friday, I think he will have to be. And if he has to be, then suspect that he's gonna have to have support if it's a big issue. So there'll be leakage on that day, as there probably is now on weekends, I don't know. My concern here is, you know, it's all right, I'm not asking for a question. My concern here is, you know, again, that there really hasn't been a study done on what the retention problem is in the city. What, what problem are we trying to solve? We're speculating if there's a problem, and we're speculating on what might solve it. And we're looking at a number of these communities. Can we go back to that slide, by the way, in the communities? Anyway, you know, and you suggest Biddeford, well, Biddeford's a declining city. And my impression is, for those who are, I'm sorry to say that.
Biddeford is a rocket ship, I'm just saying.
Well, I think that people who look at towns that are going to a four-day work week, it's implied that, oh, there's problems. And that's my impression. And I think that some of the towns around here are seeing what some of the problems are too with that. So I just, I'm, I'm a little bit amused by the amount of concern for, and I think you did the right thing by doing this, to looking out for the employees of the city.
And I just-
And I think our job is to look out for the people who elected us, the city. I'm done.
I think we've got, I think we've-
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for the public, I do just want to say that, so myself, department heads, our administration, we are 24/7 people. If there's ever a problem, a crisis, we are on the clock 24/7, especially me. I mean, I take calls and emails on weekends, every weekend, evenings, when I think I've talked with most of you outside of normal business hours, I'm sure, you know, Counselor Finch and I were texting, I think, at 10:00 PM last night. So just, just know that, you know, whatever happens with this, the city staff, the leadership of this city, including me, we are 24/7 people, and we're gonna get the job done no matter what. So I just want that to be-
But employees, staff people, will be getting paid overtime if they're here on Friday, correct?
Where's staff?
And is my uncle? No, I'm talking about employees, hourly employees.
Well, I don't know there's any, I mean, I mean, the only staff that I think of right now is the staff that, the clerks, right? Like, so I can't think of a, an emergency in which we're gonna require the clerks to come in to process a piece of paperwork that's an hourly employee, like, you know what I mean, I'm not thinking, you know what I'm saying, I don't understand that particular scenario in which there's such an emergency in which we have to call in clerks to process, or process someone's registration, so.
It also-
If the person is called in, is it a minimum of four hours, okay?
So a lot of that is by contract, too, right? So it's, yeah.
They don't have a call-in for apps, maybe.
Right.
So we could call them in for half an hour. Maybe we should fix that problem.
All right. Let's take a vote on this. This is a, this is an ordinance change, this is a two-vote process. The first vote is just simply a show of hands. All those in favor?
Well, I wanted to just make a comment too. When we're talking about, like, this is not serving the public, well, if somebody gets out of work at 4:30, they have an hour, and they could have an hour to get here. So I just want to make that clear, I am voting yes on it, it's because we are serving the public in that way.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? First vote. So we have five, all those opposed, five-two.
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you very much, everybody.